Thank you. At the May 4th meeting, council approved having all public comment occurred during citizen communication except for public hearings. Persons who registered to speak under multiple items will be allowed to speak multiple times. We will continue this practice unless any council member wants to make a motion to go back to having public comment on resolutions and ordinances separately. Is there anybody wishing to make such a motion? Seeing no request to make a motion, we'll proceed to citizen comment. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address council on business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may become for council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, council must wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. The city required advance in registration in order to participate in citizen communication for this meeting. If you are currently in this meeting to speak during citizen communication, please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you so you may begin. If you do not respond or are disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. First on the list is Darcy Nelson.
Darcy, if you are one of the attendees, please hit star nine on your phone or use the raise hand function and we'll get you unmuted. Mayor, I do not see Darcy Nelson in the meeting.
Thank you. Next is Shayna Oliver.
Shayna, if you could hit star nine on your phone or use the raise hand function and we'll unmute you. Looks like she is this four two one, alright. Shayna, you are unmuted and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Hi, again, my name is Shayna Oliver and I am, um, I am looking for a place and all the places that are listed for appropriate affordable housing seems to be in Commerce City and Adams County. But I don't like how you guys are promoting, um, development of oil and gas near these single family homes that most people that are looking to, to buy houses are being forced to be in these areas that you are proposing these plans for. And I don't appreciate that you disregard the, the health impacts that, or the environmental impacts that are known hazards for these, um, developments. And especially when the market is not even, um, appropriate to keep continuing these plans with oil and gas development at this state of the market that is current, that currently at. And I think it's very disregarding of your council to not inform all residents of Commerce City and Adams County of what you are doing about oil and gas development and how you're not really implementing safeguards for people before pushing your agenda through. Um, I think you should really be paying attention to the science base behind, um, the environmental impacts of oil and gas development in today's environment. And it, it's really not financially, um, stable for this council to keep, um, supporting oil and gas development in Adams County. When you already have, um, problems of, of providing clean access to water to all these homes that live in Commerce City as well as there is not adequate, um, accountability of air quality. And you should think about those things before pushing oil and gas development in areas where new people tend to, um, buy their homes.
Thank you. Next on the list is Rana Sanchez.
Hello?
Rana, you're unmuted and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Okay, Rana Sanchez, 10680 Waco Street in Commerce City. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you. I have two areas to discuss. The first is the proposed resignation agreement with the city manager. Could you please explain to me why it's necessary to offer a separation package of approximately $200,000 and I am including benefits to a person who's resigning? I've never heard of such a thing. Nine months of pay? Ridiculous. The city council was accused of wasting money on the Mayor Hughesman investigation, but that was only about $15,000 and at least you got a report for your money. This is a $200,000 expense and we will receive nothing. Could you please justify this to me and the rest of Commerce City? Second, are you going to continue working with extraction oil now that they have declared bankruptcy? How do you expect them to meet any of the financial obligations outlined in the agreement with them? We tried to warn you that the oil and gas industry was not solvent anymore, but you had to go ahead and do business with them. I hope you're going to cancel any agreement you have with them at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christie Douglas.
I see Steve Douglas on the line. Steve, I'm assuming, yep, okay. Alright, Christie, you're unmuted and you have three minutes once you begin.
Alrighty. Hi, I'm Christie Douglas. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a resident of Commerce City. Um, I watched the study session, um, on June 8th, last Monday night and, um, I was concerned once again watching, um, that, uh, meeting. And I guess what I'd like to say about that is that the oil and gas presentation, um, really bothered me more than anything else and it, it seemed like, uh, the industry concerns were more important than the residents. And that to me is really upsetting. The other thing that I found really upsetting was that there was one council person in particular who, um, just seems to want to get this over and done with and off their plates. And I want you to understand how important this is. This is your job to, um, make good decisions and take everything into consideration and, and not feel like you just want to rush through this. This is going to be so impactful and, and it's something that needs to be really, really looked at and all aspects need to be considered before any moves are made. I didn't like the way that, uh, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas was attacked for being concerned about Centcor for her constituents. I really didn't think that was appropriate at all. Um, and then in light of all the business that we're proposing to do with extraction oil and gas and their financial, current financial status, um, I am going to ask you that you consider a moratorium. We are not protected as some of the council people have said that we are because nobody's complaining on coming in, but that's not good enough. We need more time. It needs to be at least six months and it needs to be done soon. So please take this stuff seriously. Th- this is the future of Commerce City. What is your legacy? What is your legacy here? That's all I have to say, but please consider doing a moratorium. It needs, it needs to be enacted and it needs to be done soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Last on the list is Steve Douglas.
You should, you should be unmuted and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council, for allowing us this time to, uh, make comments. Uh, my first comment is, um, the presentation regarding the extension for the reunion sales and use tax reimbursement agreement. Now, back in, uh, let's see, last year, I think it was March 4th, 2019, um, there was an ordinance approving the Buffalo Hills Ranch reunion P U D zone documents and that included, um, several zonings from, what, zoning two, three, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. I voted no on that, um, but they did state and show to us that they were not using any of these, any of the thirty, um, the thirty-three percent out of three point five percent that the city had agreed from, from 2000 to now, to 2020 was a twenty-year agreement. So I advise you to vote against that because the current council does not have enough information to actually approve that or even bring that forward for a vote. Uh, the second one is, uh, the comprehensive plan with Housia Levine Associates to provide a comprehensive plan update. Now, I know our comprehensive plan back in 2019, uh, comprehensive plan, transportation plan and P R G plan, economic development plan was budgeted for $965,000. And that's what they said the party would take in order to, to do this. This is comes in at seven hundred and seventeen thousand. But in the wake of the, um, hunting building, um, not being approved because of the pandemic, not only that, last year we had a February 2nd, 2019, the possibility of recession, here we are. So I think the, the new council needs to really have an overview because the last, I say four months have, you know, city's been through a pandemic, nothing's been going on, no study sessions. Uh, none of council members have been informed, even, even the ones who've been in for two years as far as informing the other council members. So to put this on a consent agenda is, is a slap in the face to the citizens. Um, and then number three, there's a, 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 a second opportunity for reunion metro district to negotiate during executive session at the end of, in the council meeting. So please consider, um, that there has no, no prior history or information or any study session related to this topic for the prior council. Please understand, we're probably in a twenty to twenty-five million dollars, but are already behind in our, for, our budget year for sales and use tax. And, um, you know, we got to figure out what that's going to be, so please don't make another mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the public were also able to submit comments online and by mail. No written comments were received by the deadline. If anyone wishes to speak at a future council meeting, please check the meeting agenda and city website for information on how to register or submit written comments. Next on the agenda is presentations. We'd like to invite the deputy city manager to provide an update on the city's overall response to the COVID-19 crisis.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple, a few opening remarks and then I'll turn it over to the other staff members to present their, their part of the presentation. Staff has been working on reopening, uh, operations at various facilities. That has gone well at the recreation centers and at the civic center so far. Uh, it's, uh, it's been fairly complex just because of the variety of programs and different, uh, services that are provided at each of the facilities. There was a question about opening the pool at Eagle Point. Uh, that is later than Bison Ridge due to the work that's, uh, being done on the fire suppression system. Part of that is above the pool and, and therefore, uh, we can't open that pool as soon as the one at Bison Ridge. As I mentioned, the reopening is, is different for each facility and, uh, we've, we've got some good statistics to, or data to give you later on in the meeting about that. Our emphasis has been on maintaining safety for the public and for city employees while maintaining services. And, uh, part of what we're also doing in, in, as the city is providing operating grants for some of the businesses, uh, that have been impacted by COVID-19, we're also providing an exemption for temporary signage for businesses until October 31st of this year so that they can advertise that they're open or that they have services available, uh, in a certain way. It was also noted in, in the citizen comment period that extraction oil and gas has filed for bankruptcy protection. Uh, we're still reviewing the implications of that, uh, given the existing R O A agreement. We don't know all the implications of that yet so far. So I'll turn it over to, um, I believe it's, uh, Chief Nichols at this point and, uh, he will give his report.
Roger, thank you. I apologize for that. I was having some technical difficulties. Everything that I was going to cover in the update was, uh, previously covered by you, so I don't have anything else to add. Uh, and then I will pass it on to D C M Smith.
Thank you, chief. Start with, uh, community relations update. Uh, as Roger mentioned, as a result of the limited reopenings of all of our, uh, facilities, it's been a very busy couple of weeks for our community relations folks who have designed and, and executed all of our public communications. They've ordered and printed all the signage required to the public health orders and the social distancing guidelines that we have in place at all of those facilities. They've been working on the applications for the third, second round of nonprofit grants, um, which opened on Wednesday, June 3rd at 8:00 a.m. and closed on Monday, June 8th at 5:00 p.m. The city received eleven online applications and one paper application. Nonprofit grant funding was capped at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars for nonprofits. A city staff will be notifying those approved, uh, those grants later this week. Uh, with respect to our communications with public, uh, the most recent announcements of the recreation center reopening after being closed, I've seen a spike in website traffic for parks, recreation and golf. Combined total of three thousand, five hundred and forty people visited those websites over the last two weeks. In terms of social media communications, the city's reopening announcement on Facebook was the most popular post from the last two weeks. That post reached eight thousand, nine hundred people. Two combined posts about business and nonprofit recovery grant programs garnered a combined reach of over seven thousand, four hundred people on Nextdoor and seventy-three hundred people on Facebook. The windstorm cleanup event with A1 Organics reached five thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine people. And Takeout Tuesday's census promotion with local restaurants has reached four thousand, seven hundred and four people. Public art wraps have been installed on the utility boxes at the R T D Commerce City End Line Station. R T D recently installed the art wraps on four utility boxes at that same location. Two of the four boxes feature hummingbird artwork from local artist April Watson. To learn more about this new art installation and the city's public art program, please visit public art webpage at c3gov.com backslash explore backslash public art. Some economic development updates, the COVID-19 Business Relief and Recovery Grant, which council has authorized a total of $500,000 for in three rounds, for businesses experiencing financial hardship due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Eligible businesses may receive a grant of up to $5,000. Round one was $200,000 with fifty-five applications and forty-four rewards. Round two, June 3rd through June 8th, total fifty-seven applications and the applications are in the review process. Round three, which is a hundred thousand dollars, does not have dates set yet and a funding resolution has been presented in tonight's city council packet. This funding resolution adds home-based businesses and previous grantees are ineligible to apply for funding. Commerce City Small Business COVID Relief Fund, established April 20th, loans up to $25,000. This is a program partnership with Adams County and the Colorado Enterprise Fund. $200,000 was budgeted in 2020 and council authorized an additional $200,000 through the CARES Act funding. Seventeen Commerce City companies have applied so far. Three loans have been closed. Twelve companies are in the application process and two companies have withdrawn their application. The Adams County COVID-19 Small Business Mini Grant Program, which is being run through the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce and supported by the city's economic development position, is using $2.78 million in CARES Act funding for small mini grants. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand in total is aggregate, allocated rather, towards Commerce City businesses. Round one will be June 8th through 19th, 2020. Uh, on the restaurant support front, council passed an open spaces ordinance, temporary authorizing restaurants to utilize outdoor spaces. Um, the permitting process began last Friday and as of 5:00 p.m. tonight, we have not received an official application, though we have consult, telephone calls with a few businesses that are ongoing. Commerce City's Takeout Tuesdays promotion kicked off June 2nd and this month-long program connects Commerce City residents with local restaurants while sharing information about the 2020 census process. There are six local restaurants participating. Find out more information, go to c3gov.com backslash takeout. Staff also created an online directory of restaurants offering takeout, curbside or delivery services which are available at redefiningcommerce.com backslash business COVID-19. Uh, the E D division also held restaurant round tables, one on May 21st, which had thirty-one participants and June 4th session had eighteen participants. Moving on now to the finance department, the 2019 Caffer presentation is scheduled to go before city council on July 13th. They are prepared to do this present, our vendor is prepared to do the presentation virtually. Any changes to this date will be communicated with the council or the public. The next CARES Act report is due to Adams County on July 4th. As a result, finance will remit the report on July 2nd. In the tax division, we have eighty-three active audits in process, nine audit postponements due to COVID-19 and that's down nine since my last report to you. No audit payment plans have been missed. That's down three since our last report. In the city clerk's office, we've received twelve business license applications and eighteen core requests since our last meeting. Moving on to human resources, we have three hundred and sixty-two actual employees out of four hundred and one budgeted F T E positions. We have one hundred and ninety-two V H Es on staff and fifty-seven V H Es remain furloughed. Thirty-nine vacant full-time positions across the organization. H R has been working to implement an electronic request for position process through the NeoGov system. And they began screening applications and skitter, scheduling interviews for positions that have been authorized by the city manager's office to fill vacant positions. One of those is an I T for service desk analysts and there are additional positions needed in the Parks and Rec Department as a result of reopening our facilities. In our information technology department, last two weeks, we had ninety-three service desk tickets opened. Year-to-date, those tickets number thirteen hundred. I T did training with Q list, the mobile queuing and scheduling technology we have purchased as a result of the need to schedule people to visit city hall and our other facilities. A training occurred on June 5th and will occur, and occurred on June 12th with the clerks, the court clerk's office, the court, community development and the police department. City staff are currently testing and learning the system in preparation for its go-live to the public. The e-ticketing implementation project will kick off this week. We were able to move up on the vendor's schedule and begin installation of that product sooner than we anticipated. Hardware and software licensing is on order to support hybrid city council and public meetings in the future where people could attend both in person and others could attend virtually. City staff are pushing this project forward as quickly as possible. We intend to have an implemented solution by the end of July. That concludes my report for the departments I'm responsible for reporting out for. Thank you very much.
And unfortunately, I skipped over city attorney Cheesely. Uh, he should have gone after me, so, uh, turn it over to him.
Thank you, Roger. Just briefly, good evening, council. Uh, the city continues to be under the safer at home and in the vast great outdoors order, um, that was implemented early in June. Last week, restaurants and, or in the last couple of weeks, restaurants were allowed to open along with recreation centers and gyms and outdoor playgrounds. Uh, we, we are seeing a, an expansion of, um, the, the prior regime a little bit, leading towards what would be hopefully what is now going to be called the protect our neighbors phase, that I believe the governor of this announced this afternoon, hope to be implemented later in June, uh, probably in July at some point. From the, uh, executive order standard, the, the big one over the weekend and recently was to extend the limitations on evictions, uh, for another thirty days. That is the update regarding the state of legal affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Then reporting on the external facing departments, uh, the ones that are providing the services directly to the public. Uh, I'll start with community development first. Uh, they have, uh, worked on the comprehensive plan update and, uh, that is scheduled for city council approval this evening. Also, in terms of development review, there's the legato development that is still continuing on and, uh, we have no additional information. and we have no additional information tonight for you. Buckley Crossing, that is, that would be north of Hundred and Twelfth Avenue out near Tower Road. That is proceeding in terms of P U D amendment. We expect that to come in in the next few weeks. My High Greyhound site, the D two plat terminology adjustment was submitted on June one and their P I A is under review. In terms of new projects, there's several substantial projects. One is on the smaller side, that's at Marty Farms, their remaining industrial property sold. And what's being proposed there is a fifty thousand square foot industrial development building. Murray Farms, we have a prospective development team that has started meeting with staff. And at Hundred and Fourth and Joliet, we anticipate one point two million square feet of industrial development by the end of June. So that one is a very large development. Oil and Gas, there's a meeting coming up on the twenty-second for your discussion about the amendments to the L B C, the Land Development Code. And then there's a special planning commission meeting coming up on June twenty-three for stadium auto parts. In terms of building inspections, one thousand two hundred and ninety-two building inspections were conducted so far in June and one hundred and sixty permits were submitted in the first one half of June compared to three hundred and two in June of twenty nineteen. So again, ten more than what we saw same period in June last year. Other significant projects, I think I reported on most of these prior to this, eighty-two fifty-one Quintero. Ninety thousand square feet of of tenant improvement is near approval. And one zero seven one four Havana Street. Small, just under ten thousand square foot office shop is under review. Fifty-four fifty Dahlia, six thousand square foot addition for repairs. One eight one two one eighty-first street, ten thousand square foot of covered parking and a fueling station. At one seven 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 six East Eighty-Fourth Avenue, three core and shell buildings, five hundred and sixty-four thousand square feet, that's under review nearing approval. And then Huntington Industrial, one hundred and Eighth Avenue, also corn shell buildings that are under review. One is sixty-four thousand five hundred, another one is one hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet and the third one is eighty-one thousand nine fifty-two. Moving on to C D B G, there's resolutions to amend the citizen participation plan and plans to disperse the COVID nineteen dollars to maker. Moving on to Parks and Recreation Golf, as I mentioned earlier, they opened both recreation centers. There are capacity for people to sign up for the cardio wait time blocks. There's also some capacity on cool times, it's limited to eight people. Also, when the two recreation centers opened this morning, it was successful. Patrons were waiting in their cars at seven A M. And they filtered into the centers using social distancing and were lined up outside on our social distancing markers. So people have been polite and respectful of each other's concerns. And guests had reported that they're excited to be back in the recreation centers and they followed all the guidelines that were set out. There are prime, some prime time blocks that are still available at Bison Ridge. The prime times are mostly at capacity, however, there are little wait lists and there are some some various times that are available. So people are encouraged to to inquire if if they're interested. Time blocks are open a week in advance and so reservations for June twenty-two open today. And people can, again, like I said, apply for those. The pool at Bison Ridge is at capacity at the high demand blocks such as five to six thirty P M. However, there are other time blocks that are available throughout the week. And then Eagle Point, again, cardio and those type of services are available. The pool is not opened, as I mentioned at the beginning. The youth camp is going well at Eagle Point. That started on June one with thirty weekly participants that registered already back in February. Buffalo Run Golf Course, we've seen seven thousand seven hundred rounds of golf played through yesterday. And the revenues are steadily increasing. The first week it was two thousand dollars, by the end of May it was six thousand four hundred. And the week of June one to June seven jumped to twelve thousand and June eight to fourteen was eighteen thousand. So again, nice increases in the revenues for food and beverage sales. The Junior Golf, First He, that started on June one as well. There's eight kids in the class with four classes per day on Mondays. So again, full capacity and and being well received. Public Works Projects, Seventy Second in Colorado, that work is basically complete except for paperwork with C dot. Eighty-eighth Avenue, projected completion for the environmental assessment and preliminary design is the fourth quarter of this year. Staff just submitted a build grant on May eighteen for that project for some additional funding for actual construction. Vasquez, the executive director was going to make a presentation to city council on June twenty-two. That has been moved back and so we're waiting to get that firmed up before we know exactly when that will occur. And that's again to be held prior to going out to public outreach on that project. Hundred and Fourth Avenue Signals, Revere Florence and Joliet are complete and operational. They're waiting on the L E D streets, street signs. Meanwhile, we put up temporary street signs so that people know what intersection they're at. Pavement Management and Flatwork, Flatwork started with the Northern Range and it's moving to the historic city about July one. And paving starts the week of July sixth. And estimated completion of that will be at the end of November. Bid Bridge Replacement on Hundred and Twelfth Avenue, we're at thirty percent design and they're holding a meeting on that tomorrow and estimated completion for design is August fifteen. Bridge Replacement for Potomac and Prioria, that was awarded to Benish and so that work on the design will be starting shortly. Brighton Road, Hundred and Fourth to Hundred and Twelfth. Council approved selection of Hewitt Zollers and so they're at the thirty percent design as of tomorrow as well. And then looking at some of the development projects, Hundred and Twelfth Avenue, Chambers to Parkside, they plan to start paving that this week. And meanwhile, the trucking that's hauling dirt has been detoured onto a different road to again deal with the the dust issues that were there. I think that pretty well wraps up external department reports. And again, staff is available for any questions that you were, you may have and happy to to answer those.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for staff? Looks like Councilmember Smith.
D C M Tinklerberg, thank you for the presentation. I just have a quick question about the construction that was done on Colorado. So the bike lane on the side, it just kind of looks like a shoulder. Is there a way to get more signage for that or like maybe a green stripe? Because it just, that is very, like, it's driven on a lot, so just to get some more signage on that so people don't think it's a shoulder and take out a biker because that would not be fun.
Yeah, okay, thank you. We will pass that on to Public Works and have them review that and get the appropriate signage and marking on the pavement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Noah.
Thank you very much for your, everyone's comprehensive report on what's been going on. Appreciate it. We got a question and I have seen it across social media as well regarding King Supers. And I wondered how we receive outbreak information from the county and from C D P H E and if there's anything that we need to be doing proactively if it is an outbreak at a public, you know, some someplace that everyone goes to, for example, as opposed to one of the nursing homes in Commerce City where they're on lockdown anyway. But maybe we should all have some idea. I'm not sure what the rules are about it, but there was a question. And since we don't receive that information, I wondered if you could let us know how that process works, please.
I would have to defer to the chief. I I believe we do not, we no longer get information by address, but I would defer to chief if you can answer that question.
I sure can, Roger. We do receive some information. It comes through the state courtesy of Adams County. The only information we receive are for residents that actually reside in Commerce City. So if they are employees, so it would only be residence information. So generating information as to where they all collectively work would be almost impossible to do. So if the employee doesn't live in Commerce City, we would not get that information anyway. The city that they lived in would get their their positive information. So we don't get it as it relates to outbreaks in businesses or related to some other event. We just get an individual got tested, they came up positive, we get a flag on the address. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
It does in a way. I know that Westward Magazine did an article on it and they check in with C D P H E. Every few issues or they must have some sort of schedule that they operate on. So they, this information was included in an article that they received the information from C D P H E. So I'm just making note of it because until this is under control, we may need to know where these things are occurring and maybe we need to do something proactively in order to have that information and be able to inform our residents when it's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff regarding the city's response to COVID nineteen? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda. We'd like to thank everybody for your report and the comprehensive information provided to us this evening. Next on the agenda is a presentation on the request to extend the reunion sales and use tax reimbursement agreement. Will Deputy City Manager Tinklerberg please provide the presentation?
Dylan, if you could share the presentations on the screen?
Yes, sir. Let me know when you're ready to go to the next slide.
Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'll quickly review what we're going to cover tonight. One is the purpose and background and then the overall agreement goals and review the projects to be funded and give you our recommendations and talk about the next steps. The purpose of the executive session this evening is to instruct negotiators regarding some of these points and and so I'll try to highlight some of that. Go ahead. Oakwood Homes representatives have requested that the city extend the existing agreement. This agreement currently is for thirty-three percent of three percent sales and use tax. And as mentioned earlier, it is for a twenty-year period. The public improvements that are built using this funding are normal city responsibilities. For an example, the first segment of widening Hundred and Fourth Avenue was done by the reunion metro district and that normally would have been a city responsibility. And so the request to extend is is the reason for us asking for council direction regarding that request, whether we should consider it or not and continue negotiations. Next slide. So this agreement, as mentioned, was entered into in two thousand and one and that consolidated eight previous agreements and basically covered a whole wide range of topics. And then there was a subsequent agreement that was entered into in two thousand and three that supplemented the above consolidated agreement and basically focused in on the sales and use tax and building permit revenue sharing. And that's the subject of the request is to basically extend that agreement for some targeted projects. Next slide. So again, that agreement set the revenue share at thirty-three percent of three percent. So one of the questions for tonight, as you instruct us as negotiators, are you content with thirty-three percent of three percent or should that change in some way? And we'll review the the list of projects later and you'll see that's an extensive list. In that agreement also, road impact fees were to be credited to reunion rather than to the landowners. Next slide. We've covered most of this, so the existing agreement expires January one of twenty twenty-two. And the agreement, as I mentioned, enabled reunion to proceed with Hundred and Fourth Avenue improvements. I have included in the council packet a copy of the original two thousand and one agreement and the two thousand and three agreement for your information. Next slide. So the goals of this agreement are to provide a funding mechanism for reunion to build public improvements that are city responsibility. And it allows reunion to build those public improvements on a schedule that is compatible with reunion's development. In other words, projects can be built when when they need them built and those projects don't have to wait on the city's project schedule and our staff workload. It also basically provides for those public improvements without the city needing to directly fund them or manage the projects. Again, that saves on city staff time because we do have plenty of other projects. Next slide. So this is a map that shows the proposed road improvements. So you can see Hundred and Twelfth Avenue is on there, two different segments. The segment in the middle there between Chambers and Parkside are, is being worked on right now. There would also be Chambers Road, High Plains Parkway, which is intended to ultimately connect from the existing Tower Road alignment to the Buckley Road alignment on the north side at Hundred and Twentieth. This would also improve Potomac south of Hundred and Fourth and improve a portion of Ninety-Sixth Avenue as well as the south end of Chambers Road and then plan a portion of landmark. There are also drainage projects. I did not include the map that shows all of those. We're still talking about the various projects. I do have a list of the projects that are being discussed besides these road projects and those involve Second Creek Outfall, O'Brien Canal Relocation, the Second Creek Regional Detention Pond, Ragweed Draw, Third Creek Drainage Outfalls, that type of thing. So a number of improvements and and we can discuss that later in terms of what projects to include. Next slide. Here are the estimated costs for those various projects. You can see that the subtotal for transportation projects is a hundred and Here are the uh estimated costs for those various projects. Uh you can see that the subtotal for transportation projects is a Hundred and three. Almost a Hundred and four million dollars. Uh potential drainage subtotal is uh in the neighborhood of. Of uh forty-eight million dollars for a potential total of one Hundred and fifty-one million four hundred. Uh in terms of all of those potential projects. And so one of the items for, you know, a question for city council later is. Are you uh okay with this list or do you want us to do further research and then provide direction? Next slide, please. An extension of the uh sales and use tax agreement is recommended. Uh it has worked successfully so far. The benefit of the extension is that it focuses in on specific projects. And so we will be working to scope out those projects. And as I mentioned, uh it provides a funding mechanism for reunion to build the public improvements that are the city's responsibility. And it allows them to build those improvements on a schedule that's compatible with their development. Um so they can build them when they need them and uh they don't have to wait on the city's project schedule and workload. It also uh provides the needed public improvements without the city needing to directly fund or manage the projects. And uh managing the projects is a sub- substantial task. And so uh the this is of a benefit to the city. Therefore, we do recommend approval to move forward conditionally. And uh again, look for your direction in the executive session. Are there any questions? You can go to the next slide. Uh these are the next steps. Uh we would negotiate the extension. Uh the remainder of this year and present a proposed agreement to you in the coming year. And then uh new IGA would would uh take effect on January of twenty twenty-two. Are there any questions for me or or any of the other staff?
Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. Um I think a lot of people aren't aware that uh. While reunion builds out the roads, that the city maintains all roads after that point. So. We want to make that clear that once the road is built, that becomes the city's responsibility after that. I read was reading the IGA from uh twenty years ago or twenty, two thousand and three. And on page five, it talks about uh whenever one of these projects is finished, that the district shall submit to the city. A statement of actual costs incurred or suffered by the district. And uh I wondered if we have been uh receiving those documents, if we have been reviewing them. There is a thirty-day deadline for the city to respond on each of them, a thirty-day review period. And if so. What information can we glean from that regarding actual costs? Incurred or suffered? Was and what happens to the extra money if there's ever any extra money? Or if we noticed any anomalies in the costs?
So two, two items. Uh you are correct about the city maintaining those uh streets once they're completed. That's assuming uh again. I I have to be careful about a general statement because occasionally a developer will have uh private streets. And those remain the responsibility of a metro district, for an example, to maintain those. Uh in these, in this case, though, we're talking about public streets and you are correct. The city, uh once they're dedicated to the city, the city. Uh has the responsibility to maintain and clean and that type of thing from there on. In terms of your question regarding the intergovernmental agreement, um I have asked staff to uh in finance to. Give us an update. However, they just completed the uh annual audit. And they're working on on the budget at this point. So they've been swamped and therefore uh. You know, it'll it'll be some time before we receive an update in terms of what the existing status is uh on the existing agreement. The other thing bear in mind, the original agreement was with Shay Holmes and uh Oakwood take. Took over the the master developer role from Shay Holmes. And uh so they've, they've been uh basically working under this agreement. Since two thousand uh twenty seventeen, two thousand and seventeen. So uh again, this is relatively new to them as well. So. But we'll, we'll be able to give a report. It's just, it's gonna have to wait a little bit, unfortunately.
It would seem that the best way to do it is to have them simultaneously then if we're being asked to make a decision. That we have the report and we make a decision. As opposed to making a decision and then waiting for the report.
Yeah, that makes sense. Uh because it's gonna be some time before we are able to bring a document back to you for your approval. Yeah, at any rate, and also so.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Proton?
Um yeah, I was just curious, like, how long are they, are you wanting to extend this out? And is it another twenty years they're wanting to do this or how long are they?
That is gonna depend, I I would say, on the amount of uh projects that we agreed to cover. Because, you know, it's a function of of uh total cost of those projects. And related to that, uh you know, what's the expected revenue that would be shared over that time? You know, if we focus only on transportation projects for for an example, you know, you're talking a little under Hundred and four million. If we include drainage projects, then then we're over a Hundred and fifty-one million. So a- again, it's a function of revenue, time. Uh and number of projects, basically, to to get that to to match out.
Okay. And it's the developer that's that's paying for this or who? I mean, how are they getting the money, the revenue and sales tax and all that? Where's that coming from? Oops, sorry.
The initial uh money would be fronted, as I understand, that I haven't gone gotten into those details. Uh with the representatives from from the district, but uh what has happened in the past is the metro district fronted the money. And uh the city reimbursed uh over time as revenue came in. So in that sense, uh they were at risk. That there would be enough development to generate sales and use tax to reimburse them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you for your presentation, Roger. Um I have a few questions, but the first one, I'm looking at my notes as well. Um how much money has reunion metropolitan um districts received um like from January first to current?
That that would be part of the report that I mentioned to Councilwoman Noble that uh. You know, finance will need to pull the those numbers together to give us an update.
Okay, thank you. And then um other question, did the city receive um any road impact fee for the development of ninety-six? From reunion?
We take in road impact fee as building permits are pulled. And so uh as each permit is issued, they pay all of the uh. Building permit fees as well as the impact fees. So as each house is permitted, then there's a. Amount of money that's collected for each home. And uh so that that again is part of that report that we'll have to uh. Uh have finance complete later on.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Noble?
The um agreement also mentions that said revenues can be used for payment of bonded indebtedness. As well as construction or acquisition costs. So um not only am I the word for representative, I happen to live in. Reunion also. So the question is, um at what point have they used any of these funds? To reduce the bonded indebtedness for the metro district or are they um. Doing projects that instead um. Enhance new development. So that the district continues to be, the residents continue to be encumbered as the developers. Continue to build new homes. And and the residents are not seeing the benefit of this agreement. Because it is not, none of the funds are being used um for bonded indebtedness.
I do not have that information for you at this time. I I don't know, you know, what reunion can share with us. We certainly can ask that.
Now, it's in the the IGA.
Okay, then we will ask for it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff? So looking at this on the surface, I find this one to be a little bit hard to swallow. Um. The Hundred and Twelfth Avenue project between Chambers and Parkside were kicking in about half the money. And the other money, half money was supposed to be kicked in by Oakwood in order to do that project. And then you find out. Down the road that the money they're kicking in was actually money that we rebated back to them to begin with. And so I'm curious, I mean, how much money do we need to continue? Is this truly a equitable situation? Where we are getting the best return out of our money by giving them money and then having to turn around and put twice as much money on top of it again, but. We can have that discussion later in an executive session should council choose to go to that. Um I think it's a little bit premature to go in there without seeing all the dollar figures and trying to really understand what's going on. Uh to go in there and talk about how do we even instruct negotiators to uh go back to the table when we don't even know. How much money is being generated, where the money is being spent or what's being done on that. But again, that'll be a conversation for later in the evening when we get to that agenda item. Uh one last time, are there any other questions for uh staff concerning this uh agreement? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine procedural informational, self-explanatory and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and separate vote. Tonight, there are five items listed under the consent agenda. This includes resolution two zero two zero dash four one, which was added to the agenda today. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilwoman Noble?
So I'd like to remove resolution twenty twenty thirty-four.
Very good. We'll move twenty twenty thirty-four. Are there any other uh requests to remove items off of the consent agenda? And I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Mayor Proton?
A motion to approve the consent agenda as a gen- as amended.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as amended, which means pulling resolution two zero two zero dash three four from the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the titles?
Ordinance two two seven seven and ordinance amending the twenty twenty budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado. By the recognition of the National League of Cities Census Rapid Response Grant Program and the amount of nine thousand four hundred dollars and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance two two seven eight and ordinance amending the twenty twenty budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado. By the recognition of the Colorado Auto Theft Prevention Authority Grant Program and the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. And authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance two two eight oh and ordinance amending the twenty twenty budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado. By the recognition of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Bar Lock Grant Funds through the Fares Act in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand. Five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-five, resolution amending the directory uh of city fees and charges. Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-one, resolution authorizing a supplement. And so Commerce City Small Business Support slash Recovery Grant Program.
Thanks, sir. The titles have been read. We'll take a roll call though.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
That was ninety-zero.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Noble, you requested to pull resolution two zero two zero dash three four. Please explain why.
Uh yes, I wanted to uh pull the resolution regarding the comprehensive plan. And the seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollar uh contract with the planning company. For this reason in particular is that we could, or two reasons, that we have a presentation on the comprehensive plan. And what's going to be included in it. And secondly, as part of that presentation, that we have a review of the twenty twenty plan. And what was attained and what wasn't attained in the last decade. Before we move on to the new uh comprehensive plan. This is a considerable amount of money. We have been um, we're going to be. Potentially expending more money this evening and we turned down um the Honan Building a couple of weeks ago. So. I think anything that we go into, we need to go into it very clearly. So I'm asking if we could postpone this. Until we have a presentation from staff about the comprehensive plan and uh the elements and the twenty twenty comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Staff like to uh respond to that?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason Rogers, uh Community Development Director. I I would like to note, uh thank you, uh Councilmember Noble for your comments. One, today we actually do have a a PowerPoint presentation outlining uh the purpose of the comp plan, but ultimately also. Uh the purpose for selecting Houses Levine. Um and the components that will be incorporated as part of the twenty twenty uh comp plan project before you today. If you would like to have that presentation. Um and also just kind of share for additional consideration. As it relates to your request about what we've been able to achieve, what we have not been able to achieve. It is typical as part of any comp plan update process that we undertake what is a diagnostic report. It is a strength, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis of the various components, policies, uh long-term vision that we had. Enacted back in twenty ten, determine what we were able to succeed, where there was, there's area and opportunity for improvement. Um once again, the amount of staffing resources and capabilities, we do not have that internally to be able to perform. At a level and at a high level and at a quality that would be able to help define for our residents. Um certain things that they would like for us to accomplish or deceive, but ultimately also for mayor and city council. In being able to make certain decisions about the long-term future. Uh consultants bring in certain resources. And certain technological, um I will say, capabilities that we do not have, that we rely with this diagnostic report. That would come with this comp plan update. So just as a a matter of practice with what we've seen and how things have conducted in the past. Uh with this type of work.
Woman Noble?
Uh I have looked at the slide presentation and it didn't address some of those questions. There was a considerable amount of money. That was going to transportation, for example. And I think it just warrants more discussion. By the council regarding the categories of the comprehensive plan. Vis a vis the past ten years. I happen to have read the comprehensive plan when I was running for city council because it seemed like an important thing to look at for sure. To know what it was that the residents of Commerce City wanted to see for their futures. What have we been able to accomplish and what haven't we been able to accomplish before we create a new document? That gives us a whole new set that we may not accomplish. I see these wind up in um. The files frequently. And I just uh would like us to be more deliberate. About uh how we're approaching the comprehensive plan instead of just approving the money and sending the co- consultants off. On their merry way.
Councilman Wardiola?
Yeah, um my question is, are we on a timeline to make that decision or could we do a study session? Um and um get more information. I know there's new council members that, we've, we've seen this. Um but with the times of the budget, seven hundred. there's new council members that we've, we've seen this, but with the times of the budget seven hundred thousand. What's the timeline, Mr. Rogers?
So the overall timeline from Super Nuts for the comp plan is approximately eighteen to twenty one months. For us to be able to go through a very engaged, robust and connected process with our, our, our community. A number of different stakeholder groups, both from a technical, but also from those that we partner with with respect, with respect to other, other agencies and then obviously a level of engagement with the Citizens Advisory Committee throughout that process. Kind of looking at and breaking out the various components. The comp plan itself is slated, obviously, if all things were to move forward with a supportive contract today. Kickoff in August with the completion of October twenty twenty one for adoption of the new comp plan and then sequentially staggered a kickoff of the transportation plan through June twenty one, June twenty twenty one with the completion of August twenty twenty two. The economic development strategy looking at twenty twenty one through May twenty twenty two. And ultimately the Parks and Recreation Golf Master Plan, starting at the same overlapping timeframe of June twenty twenty one to January twenty twenty two. So a staggering effect across all supportive documents in, in a very high level of engagement and diagnostical view of various technical details and obviously policy details and recommendations and driving factors into what we currently have in place to inform us as we go forward.
Thank, thank you.
Councilwoman Madera?
Can you just speak a little to how the comprehensive plan is used going forward?
Yeah, I'd like to think of the comprehensive plan truly as the backbone spine infrastructure or how certain policy decisions on growth and development, certain public infrastructure and supportive amenities as we think about Parks and Recreation Golf Plan, how we look at identification of public parks, how we create policy of looking at private parks that come within new residential development. How we look at the clustering of a variety of land uses that are compatible from a, I'll say, a contextual sensitivity from impacts as it relates to nuisances with noise, air and other, and other impacts. But ultimately looking at how you then start to look through the urban design framework of how you stitch new communities in with existing communities, how you look at the revitalization, the repurposing. And then obviously looking at how other certain policies of sustainability, resiliency, environmental quality start to stitch into itself so that you have a very comprehensive development or, or growth of a community that is playing its part into the larger region. So a comprehensive plan is, is very much a, a starting point in how a lot of conversations about how the city ultimately grows and is sustainable with its growth and development. For, as you, as you will see as we identify for at, at, at most forty to forty-five years out.
And can you speak a little bit of, you know, why these plans are updated every ten years and, you know, what what the purpose behind that is?
Very good question. As we've already started to see with the changing dynamic in the market and what I mean by the market, what we've understood as various development trends, both traditional and new dynamic trends with horizontal and vertical mixed use in order just the subsidence, the, the contraction of the retail market. It allows for us to, once again, stay ahead of the curve and, and stay in front of developing trends so that we know how to address, we know from a policy perspective that then ultimately we'll filter down into our land development code about how we take policy turn into regulation and standards. So being able to update these on a regular timeframe allows for us to be able to modulate and to be able to meet the needs of our community and what we're understanding, what can be delivered into the community based on obviously emerging market trends.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Noble?
In looking at the twenty twenty comprehensive plan, there is an entire section from the community that was very innovative and was looking ahead on greenhouse gases. I can't see necessarily what, if anything, was accomplished in the past ten years regarding greenhouse gases in Commerce City, but there it is in the twenty ten general plan. So if it is the backbone, if it is the spine, then what is it that we accomplish with it? If we use it to determine development, why are there so many areas of Commerce City that are zoned PUD? Which for a while I actually thought meant planned, planned unit, unit development would mean it was planned, but in fact it's kind of a big bucket for all kinds of zoning without a whole lot of, of planning going into it. I think because there are four of us at a minimum who are new, let alone everybody else hasn't been on the city council for more than two years. That taking another month or two will not affect the timeline that much in order for us to have a clear understanding of where we're headed and how we want it to integrate with the past and with the future as well.
I have one question I'd like to get in. Looking at the legislative text, it doesn't show any of the other bidders or the values of their bids for their proposal in response to the RFP. Can you speak to that of how many other bidders? I noticed this company has offices in Illinois and other locations and no offices in Colorado. So my question is, were there any local candidates that applied or submitted a proposal?
Yes, sir. There were, there were other local candidates that did provide or did submit for the comp plan. We had one that had submitted for the comp plan. Actually, excuse me, we had five proposals that were submitted for the comp plan. Some of those costs associated with those five proposals. One local, at the same time, we had some that were also out of state. I would say that the majority of what we found as the next closest bid proposal was a hundred and seventy thousand higher than Housle Levine to perform all of the requested work that we bring forward to you today. And just to clarify, Clarion is a local consultant based out of Denver, Colorado.
Thank you. Councilman Hearst?
I wanted to ask if we could take this discussion to after the presentation because I think these are really good questions. I just think some of it might be addressed in the presentation where we can then kind of ask these follow-up questions on anything we feel was missed. Because I, I agree, this, the, the next ten years is big for our community, for our city. And so understanding the direction and kind of giving direction to a consultant is important. But I also want to understand that there's a process that takes place and why we're spending that much money on this plan. It's because of the input that we'll have to go into developing this plan. And so I want to hear more about that. Because, you know, we could be having a long discussion about, you know, what's what direction we're sending the vendor on, but that direction may not be decided until after we actually issue the contract. And then we all sit to get, sit down as stakeholders with the community and decide that direction. So I think it's a great discussion. I just would love to hear the presentation before we can kind of dig into it, if you will.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
Yes, I just was curious also, you know, as a new councilwoman, I agree with Councilwoman Noble that I would like, you know, more information and I did review the presentation, but we have to keep in mind as well that we are in a pandemic now and it may take us years to recover. So all of this needs to be incorporated in that as well. So I just wanted to express that.
Councilwoman Noble?
I did, Councilmember Hearst, I appreciate your comment. Keep in mind, I took this off the consent agenda, so the presentation, what wouldn't have been made, it would have just been approved. I would like to make a motion for a study session on this and for at least a portion of a study session so that we can discuss it there and not just look at the presentation that some people may not have necessarily seen and also take into account everything that's happened in twenty twenty, since twenty ten with the comprehensive plan that I'm not sure staff is prepared to address tonight. So again, I would like to make a motion for a study session on the comprehensive plan past and future.
Would you like to amend that to continue this item until after a study session is given to the council? Any presentation on this?
Could you say that again, Mayor?
Would you like to amend your motion to continue this item until after a study session where a presentation can be given on this subject?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I like your amendment. Thank you. Are you seconding it?
Well, I'm not, but I needed to clarify that because this was an item of discussion that needed to be voted on. So I wanted to clarify that you wanted to continue this until after we have a study session. So I have a motion on the table to continue resolution two zero two zero dash three four until after staff can prepare a presentation. Prior to looking for a second, I've given an opportunity for Mr. Tinklin Burke to speak.
I was just going to offer August ten as a possible study session, but it's sort of irrelevant to the motion, so.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion in a second to continue resolution two zero two zero dash three four until after a study session can be held in order for council to receive a presentation on all aspects of the comprehensive plan. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our discussion of the consent agenda. Next on the agenda, we have resolutions, the next two items related to the city's CDBG program, and we'll have a consolidated public hearing. This time I will open the public hearing. Would anybody on council like staff to give the presentations that were included in the packet? Seeing no request for the presentation, does anyone on council have any questions for the staff regarding these two resolutions? Seeing no questions for staff, Mr. Clerk, was there anybody registered to speak on this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public registered to speak and no written comments were received by the deadlines.
Thank you very much. One last time, does anyone on council have any further questions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. First up is resolution two zero two zero dash three six, approving substantial amendment to the twenty sixteen, that's twenty twenty Citizen Participation Plan. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash thirty six. Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash thirty six.
Thank you, Councilwoman Allen Thomas.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to adopt resolution two zero two zero dash three six. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title, then take a roll call vote?
Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty six, resolution approving a substantial amendment to the twenty sixteen to twenty twenty consolidated plan, Citizen Participation Plan. And then I'll go ahead and proceed with the vote. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the list is resolution two zero two zero dash three seven, approving first substantial amended twenty nineteen action plan. Looking for a motion in a second to adopt resolution two zero two zero dash three seven. Mayor Pro Tim?
A motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash three seven.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
I'd second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to adopt resolution two zero two zero dash three seven. Is there any discussion? I would ask the city clerk to read the title and then take a roll call vote.
Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty seven, resolution approving the first substantial amended twenty nineteen annual action plan. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Hughesman Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is resolution two zero two zero dash three nine, an authorization for expenditure of CARES Act funding to provide mortgage and rent relief to Commerce City households. Does anybody on council wish to have the presentation given to us? Seeing no request for presentations, anyone on council have questions for staff? Questions for staff, I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt resolution two zero two zero dash three nine and ask if there is any discussion. Mayor Pro Tim?
A motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash three nine.
Thank you, Councilwoman Allen Thomas.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to adopt resolution two zero two zero dash three nine. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, my apologies. I, would it be useful though for the community to know what's going to be in this, in this package? Before we vote on it? I think it would. It's an important step and it would be worthwhile to share the information with the community who might be listening in and avail themselves of this relief.
Gibson, would you please pull the presentation up and whoever staff member is going to present that, please do so.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. So just kind of recap, the city previously accepted and appropriated funding for funding of the general fund for general fund purposes authorized by the CARES Act. This had equated to about four point six, it's some odd million dollars. On May twenty eighth, twenty twenty and further support, June twenty twen, June first, twenty twenty, council gave direction to staff to establish a mortgage and relief program using a portion of the CARES Act funds. The purpose of this program is to provide Commerce City residents in need with an additional emergency resource to prevent eviction and or foreclosure because of the COVID nineteen crisis. This item tonight is authorizing the expenditure of five hundred thousand dollars of CARES Act funding and allows staff to identify a partner to administer these funds on behalf of the city. Staffs currently negotiating eligibility parameters and award criteria with partners, but the broad distribution of these funds is targeting those at or below eighty percent of the area median income. In discussing with our partners, no finite numbers, but what has been shared is that this will be able to have a significant impact on a number of families and or residents within the boundaries of Commerce City. With that, if there's any questions, thank you. With that, if there's any questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Noble?
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Rogers, and I appreciate that Mayor Hughesman had, uh, brought this to our attention and I thank him for that. What's the timeline on this? I don't think we gave you one and, uh, I wonder what you're looking at as the timeline so that residents can anticipate when they can apply for this.
Uh, the, it's always been the intent of staff on what we heard the goal by, by mayor and city council was to have the program stood up by the end of the month. So that is what we are shooting towards, uh, working with our partners in being able to get the program, program stood up.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to supplement, uh, what Mr. Rogers said, the, um, excuse me, the standard, uh, I think I owe five dollars to the council now because my phone just went off. Um, it's nice to see you all smile. Uh, the, uh, the AMI measurement, uh, borrowing from the county's program measured the annual, uh, the median income as of March eleventh of this year. Uh, Mr. Rogers, I don't know if that had significant impact. I can believe it coincides with the beginning of the public announcements on the, the closures on the pandemic. Um, if that was a concern for council, I just wanted to highlight that because that's in the resolution. Um, if council wanted to strike that and just leave it blank, you could do that in passing it. I don't know how the, uh, partner that is chosen would ultimately measure that. Um, clearly there has to be a, an antecedent date, but I just wanted to highlight that so everybody's aware. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other discussion on this item? All right, I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution two zero two zero dash three nine. Will the city clerk please read the title and take a roll call vote?
Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty nine, resolution authorizing the expenditure of CARES Act funding to provide mortgage and rent relief to Commerce City households. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hertz?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. That concludes all of our resolutions for the evening. Next on the agenda is administrative council business. Are there any council members that have administrative council business they wish to discuss? Councilwoman Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I would just like, um, city council and the mayor to know, um, we did on last Thursday, the senior commission had a meeting, um, a virtual meeting and it went really well and, um, just wanted to say, you know, the residents were really happy with, um, how Commerce City, um, is overall wanted, they wanted me to thank them and I want to thank, um, all the city staff for how they're improving things in Commerce City and all their hard work. Um, and just happy that we were able to have a virtual meeting. So just wanted to mainly say thank you, you know, for the city staff and all their hard work and, you know, we, we're noticing a lot of changes, especially in our area. So thank you, or in my word, I should say. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, first, I'd like to thank staff for grooming the park at Chambers and Hundred and Seventeenth. I do hope that more will come because, uh, it could use a little bit more upkeep in landscaping, so it's a very visible park, of course, and I also appreciate the efforts regarding the dust on Hundred and Twelfth between Parkland and Tower. Uh, we still haven't had oil laid there yet and that was promised. I know it's been quite windy, so maybe they haven't been able to get to it, but that hasn't been accomplished. And there hasn't been a whole lot of water that's gone down for the same reason, I suppose, because of the wind, but nevertheless, it continues to be dusty. Um, speaking of dust, on Saturday, we were driving down Hundred and Fourth when we passed by Oakwood Homes Reunion Ridge. And, uh, if I could show everyone the picture, you would be stunned at the dust that was coming off of that property, uh, crossing Hundred and Fourth and going into the homes at, uh, Potomac Farms. There was some, uh, young man who was actually trying to walk along the sidewalk to get through there, but it was a considerable mess and I, given the fact that they have graded every single inch of that property, um, I'd like to learn from staff, uh, what they could possibly do in order to tamp down, uh, that dust. I think that'll be quite difficult. Um, I also, uh, want to put in another plug for addressing speeding on Hundred and Nineteenth. And on Laredo, there are a lot of new homes, including small homes, and, um, I went out there myself and hung out on a corner to watch the traffic and, uh, there is a lot of speeding. Now, the city has tried, uh, different things in the past and the residents are asking about speed bumps. So I am curious, um, about that. And, um, I have one other item, but I might just leave those that way for a minute in case, uh, Mr. Tinklinberg has some answers to those, but I do have one more item that I want to bring up, uh, before I finish my administrative business. Since those are all kind of public worksy.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, on the dust issue, uh, Public Works has engaged with, uh, Oakwood Homes contractor regarding the dust, uh, particularly on, on, uh, Ridgeview, Reunion Ridge, I'm sorry, uh, redevelopment there. And, uh, the agreement was that, uh, they're also to provide, uh, dust mitigation there. On Hundred and Twelfth, they had a glitch with their con- uh, subcontractor, I should call it, for putting down the, the magnesium chloride and, uh, that is now scheduled. I believe, I'll defer to Joe, but as I recall, it's scheduled for the seventeenth, so this Wednesday.
Good, great.
Regarding the speeding, we'll, we'll pass that on to police department.
Okay, thank you very much. If we can't get some sort of, um, uh, if, if speed bumps aren't a consideration, is that what you're suggesting?
Um, we'll, we'll have to see if there's additional enforcement that can be done. I'm not sure if that would, that area would qualify for, um, speed bumps, for example, uh, begin to, to do speed bumps or other traffic calming. We ask for, uh, buy-in consent from, from this grounding area, so.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Then for my final item, um, tonight in Commerce City at Nativity Lutheran Church, there is a rally to stand in solidarity with, uh, the black community. Um, this has been a really challenging three weeks for all of us, I know, and, um, I feel, uh, the black community's anguish and pain and sadness and, um, as their invitation said, including Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, the time is always right to do what is right. So I know I was, um, in contact with staff this past week. And I know that Chief Nichols had, uh, prepared to answer questions I had last week regarding, uh, Commerce City's involvement in the protests downtown. We were part of, of an agreement that, um, responds to other communities' needs, but I think what I would like to do instead is I'd like to ask, um, my colleagues if we could direct staff and arrange, uh, a study session or a special meeting about, uh, the new police accountability, accountability bill. Our, uh, department policies, if you recall, when we were notified that our police department was going to be involved with the Denver Police Department, one of the things in the statement was that home rule would apply. So it's important for us to know what the policies are. I believe it's important for us and for our residents to know what the policies are of our police department, what their rules were when they entered into that, um, into those areas. And also, um, um, we haven't gotten a crime report. I know this came up some time ago, but that would be certainly worth having, plus any information on community, uh, training that our officers are involved in and utilization of, uh, mental health teams, what kind of, um, equipment, material that they keep on hand and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I think I'm really suggesting, I don't know if I'm suggesting a study session or a special meeting, but I do think that this is an extremely important issue that, that needs to be discussed and there are, uh, considerable impacts that come along with the police accountability bill. And, um, so I'm offering this up.
Are you making a motion?
Well, my problem is, is that I haven't narrowed it down to whether a study session or a special meeting makes, uh, the most sense. My newness is showing.
Mr. Sheasley?
I'd just be happy to suggest that the, the council member, uh, move to have a meeting of some kind. I think, um, they, they would each have the same function, the, a special meeting, uh, when it's scheduled, there, there's a significant amount in there to, to put together and coordinate, so it, it would take, um, some legwork to get that together, I believe, not to speak for the chief, I don't, I don't think I'm wrong. Um, an executive session, to the extent that some matters are required to be confidential by law or you need legal advice on certain things, could be accounted for in a special meeting, um, at some point. So perhaps being vague at this point and let us, let staff bring back that. I'm, I'm speaking like the city manager at this point. I, I apologize. Um, so I'll let Roger or, or the chief say, if you would just say a meeting and then we'll come back to you with a suggestion of how to schedule it.
I think that's an acceptable way to go, yes.
And, uh, I would like to move a, uh, meeting regarding, uh, the Commerce City Police Department Police Accountability Bill and, um, other related issues.
I have a motion to direct staff to prepare a meeting for us to discuss the Commerce City Police Department and your recently passed police accountability bill and the Commerce City Police Department's involvement in actions related to I GAs with other departments. Good with that?
Yes, that's good.
Frank, Councilman Wardiola?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to direct staff to have a meeting of some type with us to discuss the Commerce City Police Department, the recently passed, uh, police accountability bill and our involvement with, uh, supporting other agencies through I GAs. Councilwoman Alan Thomas?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, um, note it that I didn't, I do not necessarily see a special meeting or, you know, even a study session yet, because I'm dealing with all the situations we're dealing with now. If, if, we haven't officially got, um, received complaints with the Commerce City Police Department. Um, from what I can see and from what I've heard from residents and constituents, um, I don't really think it's necessary at this time. Um, like I said, I've heard nothing but outstanding positive comments, um, from the Commerce City Police Department. Um, they were asked to assist from what I was told in Denver. Um, and, you know, that's just my opinion. I think right now, you know, I, I see it as if something occurs with the Commerce City Police Department, we could possibly use that time to explore their policies, but right now, you know, I've had no complaints from anybody or constituents or residents about the Commerce City Police Department. Thank you.
Councilman Wardiola?
Yeah, I don't think, uh, I, I kind of second it just because I think, uh, um, I want to see what, what we have to do to prepare for that bill when it's signed. Um, you know, there's a lot of stuff that, uh, it didn't take, uh, in consideration, uh, cities like ours. So there, I, um, so when I, when I, I'm looking at this further down the, the road, maybe add a study session to let the chief and his department and the city manager see what are the things that are gonna, that we're gonna have to look into the future. Um, I, I think we have a, a, a very good, uh, police department. I think, uh, the chief has done an amazing job, um, with our, our police officers, uh, to kind of even go into the community policing that they talk about and they do. Um, so I don't think it's more, it's not for me and, and maybe I, I misinterpreted it, but it's not to say, oh, we have these issues. It's just looking forward and how this city is going to respond to the law that's going to be signed in a couple of days, um, and how we compare and be proactive, uh, and seeing what the department's going to need, our justice, uh, department's going to need, the courts. So that's why I would like to see the, the, the study session encompass all of that, not saying that we have any complaints on our department or any of that, not looking into that, just seeing what we have to do to move forward because it's coming and it's going to get signed and it's going to affect us. Um, so that's, that's one of the reasons I, I second it. Um, so yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you, Jose, Councilmember Guardiola. Yes, that was exactly my intention. It was simply to get out, um, ahead of this information and also, um, present our police department to the residents of Commerce City also. You know, I feel like I'm in a very privileged position. I, um, I'm an aging woman who, uh, white woman on top of it, who probably won't have any strange encounters and can be safe with that knowledge, but, uh, we certainly have, um, a diverse community, so it's worth looking at. And in addition, people don't totally understand Commerce City, which is kind of odd in that we don't have human, um, services department. We don't oversee the fire department. You know, we don't oversee the schools, so the, uh, but we do oversee the police department via the city manager. So we can all work together and do something positive, continue to do something positive for the community. I think that's really important. So thank you very much, Councilmember Guardiola. I understand your position, Councilmember Alan Thomas, but this is just to, um, reinforce messages, but at the same time, um, ask any questions of them that we may have and how this is going to coordinate, how their policies are going to be able to coordinate with the police accountability bill that Governor Polis is anticipated to pass. And please do keep in mind that that police accountability bill was bipartisan, it was both Democrats and Republicans who voted for that bill in both houses. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smith?
I just kind of want to reiterate a lot of things that, um, Councilwoman Orell and Councilwoman Alan Thomas have said. I work with the police department a lot, um, not in the council role, but as a paramedic in the city and compared to like some of the other cities that are around us, our police department is really, really amazing. Um, because I work with Denver and I work with the Aurora as well. And just our police department's really amazing, but I think having a study session to see what's going to be coming is really good for us so that we're not like blindsided by anything that we're all in the know. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, I support the meeting as well, but I, you know, I want to give staff, uh, and particularly chief and his team, uh, the time to put this together because I, I, I took, uh, Councilwoman Noble's, um, motion as, you know, a fact finding. There's unfunded liabilities or unfunded, um, mandates that are in that bill that, that will fall in our lap, you know, in terms of, uh, you know, Chief Nichols clearly pointed out some of the, uh, data retention clauses that are in there that will cost us, you know, in the long run in terms of, uh, being able to retain that data in a responsible manner, um, and, you know, being able to, um, put it out in forty-five days and so on and so forth as that bill lays out. Now, I, I was happy that the discussion happened by Councilwoman, uh, Alan Thomas because I'm of the same feeling that she is, that our, our police department does a very good job and I've been proud of them, um, since, you know, moving to this community. And so, I want to make that clear, but also, you know, understanding where the budget's going to be going in the next ten, five to ten years. With these, you know, mandates that come with this is very important for us in our role to understand, you know, what support the police department's going to need to comply with this new mandates, with these new regulations. It, it seems to make sense for us to kind of get in front of that for city staff to to work on, you know, wrapping their head around it and what they're going to need from us. So we have a better understanding of that. And when we, you know, hit our winter budget planning sessions, we'll be prepared to have those discussions about increased funding in certain areas of the police department to cover some of these new mandates that are in this bill.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, and I'd just like to add one thing. As a woman of color, I did reach out personally to Chief Nichols. He did address all of my concerns and I would be open, you know, to a study session, but like I said, as a woman of color, I did reach out and had concerns as to how the situation was handled when they assisted the Denver Police Department. So I, I would be open, you know, to a study session, but like I said, I, I did reach out to Chief Nichols and he did answer and address all of my questions and concerns. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other discussion, we have a motion and a second to have a meeting in the future of some type to discuss the Commerce City Police Department, the recently passed yet to be signed police accountability bill and our agreements with other police agencies through I GAs. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Huesman Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to bring up anything for administrative council business? Seeing on the next agenda item on our list is the city manager resignation agreement. Looking for a motion and a second to approve the city manager resignation agreement. Mayor Protem.
I'll motion to approve the city manager resignation agreement.
Councilman Hurst.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the city manager resignation agreement. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mayor Hughesman, Councilmember Madera and Councilmember Wadiola had raised their hand before you talked about the vote.
My apologies, I didn't see those come up. Councilman Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman. Yeah, um, you know, this has been a very tough week seeing this on the agenda and I definitely want to share my piece on it. I won't be supporting this just for the fact that people don't leave their jobs because they hate their jobs or community. People leave their jobs because of supervisors, managers and bosses. And seeing this agreement to me is not doing justice to the residents of Karma City. Today in public, public comment, we had a resident that said we're spending taxpayer money, two hundred thousand dollars on an agreement of a resignation. Right? Earlier this year, I was threatened because I voted with the rest of our, our council nine zero to do an investigation for seven thousand five hundred. They accused me of wasteful tax, taxpayer money. Now we're spending two hundred thousand. I don't think we have done justice and I can't support this. One of the reasons I won't support it is because we haven't put any council policies so that we're not here in three months, six months or a year. I'll bring forth some policies that I think we need to work on, but we haven't even discussed that. We are just discussing this resignation and I think we, we haven't looked at ourselves as a council, as a body, to see why this is really happening. And to me, that's just not right. I believe Mr. McBroom has done a great job. He's not perfect, neither are we for eight years. He has served the city of Karma City. And yes, we've heard testaments and got letters that he's not doing a good job, but we've also got letters and testaments that he did a great job. We choose to look the other way. And to me, the cup is always half full. So I won't be supporting this. I think I just, I can't support this. We all have a role. We have to look in our mirrors and really look down and see, are we really doing this, this the right for our city? Mr. McBroom is not the problem. He has done everything we've asked and he chooses to leave and it's his choice. But I won't support this. And again, people don't leave their jobs because they hate their jobs or communities. People leave their jobs because they don't like working for their managers, supervisors or bosses. So I won't be supporting this measure. Thank you.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I just like to take the time to thank city manager McBroom for everything that he's done for the city. Now, chances are you've had a new park built by you. City manager McBroom was leading that. You got a new rec center in your community that was under the direction of city manager McBroom. The on-ramp to Penya, widening of Tower Road, widening of Highway Two. You know, the, the list goes on and on all the things that we accomplished underneath city manager McBroom. And, you know, I just want to take the time to let him know that we appreciate everything that he's done for the city and know that he's laid the, the foundation for whoever steps into this role after him. And he's going to be missed. He's going to be dearly missed.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Yeah, I just, I want to take a minute to echo Councilmember Wadiola's comments. I've had a, a challenging week as well, receiving comments from residents, reading things on social media about what this resignation agreement is about, why we're here and I, like Mr. Wadiola, will not be supporting this agreement tonight. I think it's fiscally irresponsible of our council to approve an additional two hundred thousand dollars for Mr. McBroom to leave given the circumstances that have led us here. And I would also like to thank Mr. McBroom for all of his hard work. Have appreciated working with him to this point, though it's been short. And so yeah, for, for fiscal reasons and as well as transparency with constituents, I won't be supporting this agreement.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, and I just wanted to agree also, I will not be supporting this motion either. I'm, I believe, like I said, Councilmember Guardiola and Councilwoman Grimes pretty much summed it up and it is unfortunate that we had, you know, as a new council member, I only had a short time to work with the city manager Brian McBroom and I think it's unfortunate that it came to this point.
Any other requests for discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
No.
Councilmember Noble.
No.
Councilmember Wadiola.
No.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes five to four.
Mr. Sheasley, would you please like to chime in on next steps?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This resignation agreement provides for a twenty-one day period for Mr. McBroom to consider it. If accepted, it would be effective on July sixth. I do anticipate that Mr. McBroom will accept it. The next steps for the council will be to determine a process for appointing an interim city manager and beginning a recruitment process should the resignation become effective on July sixth. Currently, Mr. Tinklinburg is serving as the acting city manager. You could choose to allow that for right now, for that designation to stand and then to schedule a special meeting for sometime in the next two weeks would be my recommendation, or to do it on the night of the study session to have a, an executive session for purposes of instructing negotiators to identify terms for an interim city manager effective on July sixth. So and then at some point, probably at the study session next week, begin that process of engaging a recruitment firm through a formal request for proposals, most likely. And then, so the long and short of it is council could allow the acting city manager to, to stay as is, let Mr. McBroom identify and act again, continue to serve for the next twenty-one days and come up with a plan for the interim in the next two weeks. If that's acceptable, I think that may give time unless council wants to do so, does anything?
Any discussion regarding the comments made by the city attorney? Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Hi, Robert. I'm just curious, can you read the resignation agreement?
May I ask, is there a particular portion of the resignation agreement that you wanted me to address? It's somewhat lengthy.
Mainly the, like the portion of the amount that we're paying and that mainly the payment portion and the terms of what else we're agreeing to give Brian, the city manager.
Sure, I will give a summary of the agreement. I'll, I'll just walk through it. It begins with recitals kind of identifying the background and that the resignation is occurring without a request that he do so. The severance amount matches what is in his employment agreement had he been terminated without cause or had a request to resign. It is nine months of his current gross salary, which is one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and forty-two cents paid in monthly installments. If Mr. McBroom earns salary from another source in the next nine months, the amount the city pays would be reduced in that amount. And that is also subject to taxes and withholdings. Per city policies and his employment agreement, he's entitled to any accrued but unused annual leave that'll be calculated on the date of his resignation at his hourly rate of a hundred and three dollars. And then nine months of family health and dental insurance coverage through COBA, which would mean the city would be paying portions that the employer and employee would typically pay. Mr. McBroom would agree to be reasonably available to the city for the next nine months as a consultation type service should his knowledge and background be needed for the city. The agreement includes a mutual release by the city and it's, and from Mr. McBroom from any claims that they may have against him and then a release by Mr. McBroom of various generic description of any claims he could have against the city or any individual employee, officer, official or agent. There are some provisions about the Colorado Open Records Act to which this document would address how his personnel files are treated, which would be consistent with the law. There's no special treatment there. There's a provision regarding disclosures of his employment conditions and the separation of his employment to prospective employers and inquiries detailing his period of service here and his good standing. And then some general terms of the agreement that are, that are just kind of boilerplate language.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I can't see no other discussion on this item. We will move on to council reports. Mr. Tinklinburg.
Yes, sir. I have nothing further right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that following council's decision on the Honan Building two weeks ago, I gave an informal notice to the county and the county leadership is discussing potential for other terms that may make the deal more attractive to the city. So I just wanted to give you that update that, that may come back before you, if it is an attractive item. And we'll see what that comes up with in the next week or so, but barring anything further, we would formally terminate that in July. So just an update on, on that. Thank you. And then, of course, council knows, has discussed the police bill that passed over the weekend and is on its way to the governor, does have some immediate effect. We're working with the police department to make sure that they are fully aware of all those implications and our officers are going to be educated under that law as well. It's, it is significant for city operations. So that, that work is well underway. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. I had another administrative council business, if that's all right. I wanted to see if, I don't know how to put it in, but to do a policy committee with our peers, our council peers to oversee council policies on how we hold each other accountable. Also how we treat staff and our staff members. Again, with the majority voting, Mr. McBroom's resignation agreement, I think it's, it's, it's time that we look at ourselves and hold ourselves accountable. So I'd like to motion to set up a committee within ourselves to look at council policy, staff policy and city manager policy or our employees so we can move forward and we're not here next year.
All right, a motion to create a council policy committee to review council policies and how we interrelate with all of our staff. Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
I'd like to second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Noble.
I, I raise my hand to second it. I do think that policy is very critical and in particular when we get a new city manager that we don't repeat the same issues again. So how do we
So how do we do that? We'll have to look at the policies and maybe there is even policies that we haven't been utilizing that need to remind ourselves that we do in addition to new policies. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second for this committee. Any other discussion? We will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Sheasley?
Thank you, Mayor. At least the council, I would suggest that I work with Mr. Guardiola to come up with the language that would outline what this committee is. Typically, what I was going to say is the council committees are identified in the council policies themselves with a little bit of detail as to their scope. So if that's acceptable, I I would go ahead with that and bring it up for the next, the July sixth council meeting to amend the policies to kind of formally constitute that. And then you can appoint people to do that.
Any issues with that? Moving on to reports, are there any council members that need to make a report? Councilman Guardiola?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This week, we met with the cultural council, just kind of a quick update. Because Music in the Park was counseled, we are going to be doing the virtual music in the park. We are still contracting the same bands that will be playing on the exact same dates. We're going to be working with staff. So basically, it'll be a Facebook or YouTube or Instagram. We don't know yet. Watch Party with those same bands. And those same bands will be our live bands next year. We're working with that. So that way, this is kind of just a teaser for our community and our residents that these are the same bands that will be for 2021. So please, once we get that flyer out and get all the details ironed out, please share on your social media sites and to your network. That way, we get some good viewing.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right, I have a brief one. I met with Mark Bush last week. He wanted to show me the plans he has for developing our Hundred and Twentieth Avenue. I understand he's been in conversation with staff on getting on getting that done. And there's an IGA that will be considered for subsidy funding to make those improvements. Had a video conference with the CDOT director about the Sixtieth Avenue and Vasquez options that we were presenting last week. We are scheduled to meet her out at the site probably next Tuesday morning to talk about that. And that is the extent of my report. Any other reports, last minute alibis? Seeing none, next on the schedule is an executive session. Executive session was to continue the conversation over the sales and use tax rebate agreement for the reunion metropolitan district. Is there anybody wishing to make a motion to go into executive session? Councilman Hurst?
Just want to throw out there, is this, you know, we had quite the discussion on that already and we were looking for and and voted for a future meeting on that. And so seems to me that it would make sense to delay any executive session until we have the 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 that further discussion. Sorry, this gave me for a second. Until we have that further discussion, I'm I'm not prepared to ask somebody or give direction to a negotiator until I understand all the details necessary.
Very good. Councilman Guardiola?
I echo and agree. I think especially with the the dollar figures, right? I think we we need to get those numbers before we make further decisions.
Any other comments on that? All right, all good comments. I fully agree with that. Seeing no motion to go into executive session. That was the last item for the city council meeting. We will adjourn to the NIGID meeting at this time. Call the meeting to order. Will the secretary please take the roll?
Excuse me, Mayor, members of council, give me just a moment to get my system over to the NIG. I apologize. Chair Hughesman?
Present.
Vice Chair Frank?
Present.
Board Member Madera?
Present.
Board Member Alan Thomas?
Present.
Board Member Noble?
Present.
Board Member Guardiola?
Present.
Present.
Board Member Grimes?
Present.
Board Member Smith?
Present.